...order this meeting of the Raleigh City Council. Before we start our evening agenda, I do want to bring up one item. We had an item for discussion this afternoon, the rezoning of Z-1717. There was discussion and agreement among the council. We asked the applicant if they could submit signed conditions to agree to the height of the building would be 58 feet. That was the one additional condition. We thought we could vote on that this evening. So I do appreciate you getting those signed and admitted, but our attorney tells us that we actually have a 10-day waiting period. So we will bring that item up at our next meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all. So we'll go on to the evening meeting. The first item on the agenda, requests and petitions of citizens. And first, we have Patsy Clark.
Mayor, I've just been informed that she wants to wait and come back next meeting.
Okay. Just remind anyone, if you are speaking at the request petition of citizens, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on a zoning case, then we ask the comments be limited to eight minutes on each side. So next, we have Colson Combs. And if you, sure, if you have something to hand, give them to the clerk. And if you could just start your comments with your name and address for the clerk.
Colson Combs, 135 Cattle Farm Drive, Raleigh NC 27603. Give me a sec to get the PowerPoint up.
There you go, Kay. That's not enough here, so more.
There's more.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. All right. Good evening, city councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I would like to congratulate you on making Raleigh a safe, vibrant, friendly place. You've done a great job protecting animals and the environment, and I appreciate that. But there's one more issue that needs to be addressed. Circus animals have been overlooked for far too long. They're beaten and abused, they're mistreated, they're public safety threats, they're public health threats. There are many issues involving these animals that have been overlooked, and they need to be addressed now. First, I'd like to mention that circus animals are beaten and abused day and night. They're, from an early age, they're taken from their families and herds, one of the most important things to them, and quickly taught the ways of a circus life. They're beaten with bull hooks, baseball bats, caked, punched, yelled at, anything to get them to break their spirits, shatter their wills, and get them to perform tricks that are unhealthy for them. These tricks often cause arthritis and other injuries. In addition, they're also contained in much too small containment. They often go without clean food or water. They have to stand in their own waste. Big cats are often contained in the same cages, which is very unhealthy for them as their solitary animals. And so, this is Nosie the Elephant. She performed in the circus for 30 years. She accumulated multiple skin conditions, got arthritis. She didn't see another elephant in all of that time. And her second-to-last performance was in Raleigh almost six months ago. A month later, however, her trailer broke down in Alabama. She was apprehended and taken to the Elephant Sanctuary in Tennessee, where she will live out her days in peace. Hopefully, she'll be reunited with a fellow elephant soon that she lost long ago in her childhood. Not all elephants are so lucky, however. This is Viola. She performs in the Garden Brothers Circus to this day. She has been recorded performing with either a tumor or her reproductive organs hanging out of her. Here she can be seen standing with them and sitting on them. This causes her great pain, and she stands up almost immediately. There are also some public safety threats involved with these animals. They, as you can see in this picture, this elephant is not very well-contained. There's a thin orange mesh boundary, there's some metal fencing, they're in a used car dealership, and they're near a road. A seven-to-eight-ton animal known for tearing down trees should not be performing in a place like this. From this angle, you can see she's at a busy intersection. What if she were to run into the road, or get hit by a car, stomp on someone? All manner of awful things could happen. Also, a tiger escaped from her trailer in Georgia by malfunction and ran around on the highway for some time and in Atlanta neighborhood before she was shot and killed. Fortunately, she didn't attack someone, but if she had, it would have been awful. Lastly, I want to mention a public health threat involved with these animals. Elephants in particular are known carriers of tuberculosis, and they have been recorded passing it on to their captors and handlers. I'm not trying to ban zoos, but as an example, at the Los Angeles Zoo, 55 animal handlers tested positive for TB after a outbreak. So I just want to say, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I really hope you'll pass an ordinance banning circus animals in North Carolina. And there's a lawyer who works for the Animal Defenders International, and it would be great if you could contact her and sling pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I know that we have some complicated state regulations, but we have local animal cruelty regulations, and our attorney's way more well-versed in that than we are, but...
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that is the end of request petitions of citizens. Next item we have for public hearing, first is the AHF Cedar Moore LLC and Atlantic Housing Foundation.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Jeff Polley. I'm with the law firm of Parker Poe here in Raleigh. I've been here before for these type of public hearings.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say we'll open the hearing. Go ahead.
Okay. So our client, Atlantic Housing Foundation, is currently undergoing acquisition of 10 properties. Three in North Carolina, one in Virginia, one in Florida, and the rest in South Carolina. They seek to finance these 10, the acquisition of these 10 affordable housing projects with tax-exempt bonds to be issued out of the Wisconsin Public Finance Authority. One of the properties is here in Raleigh at 2410 Melvid Court, and it's the Cedar Moore Apartments. They can, do expect to continue operating this as to low and moderate income housing. And we are here to request, after the public hearing, for you to consider the resolution that would give the local approval for the tax-exempt bonds. And I'm happy to take any questions that I might be able to answer for you.
What is that address again?
2410 Melvid, M-E-L-V-I-D. And I'm probably doing what you did just before. It's between Raleigh Boulevard, Pool Road, and MLK.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
Do we have, did you have a question for staff, or did you...
So if I may, I know that this is a bit unusual in that this is not a series of bonds that is in any way related to the city of Raleigh. And if the council is interested, I'm certainly glad to explain a little bit about why this hearing is before you.
Please.
I think that would be helpful. So the type of bond that is before you for approval, a public hearing and approval, is what's called a private activity bond. And there are two types of bonds that are issued. One is a governmental bond, and that's something like a bond issued by the city of Raleigh. In certain very limited circumstances, a private entity can, through government resource, for certain limited purposes, issue a bond. And that bond issuer does not have to be in the location, the same state, as in which the project is located. However, as you can pretty well guess, this is an area of complex IRS regulations, and one of those IRS regulations requires a public hearing and approval by the jurisdiction where the issuer is located and the jurisdiction where the project is located. And since this project, Cedar Moore, is located in Raleigh, the applicant has come to ask for the public hearing to be held here. You will have seen in the agenda backup that there is a draft resolution. The resolution is very specific, and the applicant has included language that the city attorney's office has requested, indicating that although the council has conducted the public hearing and officially approves the matter, that the city has no responsibility for any payment of principal or interest, or any costs incurred. So in essence, what the council is being asked to do is to help the applicant by complying with IRS requirements that a governmental entity in the location where the project is issued also issues its approval. And I'm happy to take any questions, and I thank our bond counsel for...
Well, that was my question, and I'm sure you have, but just reaffirm that, that you have had discussions with our bond counsel about this, because I've never heard of this before.
Yes, sir. And this is not the first of these hearings that we've had. Several years ago, we had a similar hearing, and a bond counsel then provided information to Mr. McCormick. I know that there is a request that another hearing come forward to you in June. So this is unusual in that we don't see it frequently, and it is something on which our bond counsel has provided us information to make certain we're compliant, and that we're clear in the resolution that the city is simply maintaining its responsibility to conduct the hearing and approve, but takes no responsibility for any of the bonds that are being issued.
It would not affect any of our bond ratings right now at all?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second, I just have a question for the applicant real quick. How many units are over there?
There are a total of 81 units. Twenty-six are Section 8 HUD.
Okay.
And we continue, upon acquisition, we hope to continue that relationship.
Okay. And are those Section 8, are they site-based or vouchers for the...
That I cannot tell, that I am sorry, I cannot tell you.
Okay.
Twenty-six, rather, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I guess my question is for staff. I mean, this sounds like a fine organization, certainly maintaining our existing stocks of affordable housing in Raleigh is important to us. Do we know anything about Atlantic Housing Foundation, other than what...
Only what the applicant has provided to us.
So how about telling us a little bit about the project?
Okay. So these are existing apartment complexes, and we seek to acquire them. And so the initial bonds are to acquire them. I don't know if they will go forward with another bond issue to rehabilitate them. That is to be determined. But they plan on rehabilitating these apartments and continuing the affordable housing component of them.
When does the HELP contract expire?
That, I am sorry, I cannot, I personally am, I am working with our South Carolina attorneys on that, and I cannot...
But you're here, so...
Yes, I know. I do not know when it expires. But under the 501(c)(3) bond and pursuant to the declaration of restrictive covenants that is on the property, that they have to abide by both the 501(c)(3) requirements and by the restrictive covenants that are on the land.
Right, until that contract expires?
Yes. Well, actually, for the restrictive covenants, until something goes, until they take that restrictive covenant off, that runs with the land, so...
Okay. So can, do you even know about the mix of the units?
I do know that 26 of the 81 are HUD certified.
Four bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Oh, they're two and three bedrooms, based on my research today.
And how old is the, how old is, are there, is the property?
I believe 1981, but I could be mistaken on that.
So now, I thought this was going to be a project where you were going to rehabilitate and maintain the affordability, but from what you said, it sounds like the only commitment you're making in this transaction is to purchase and then make a later decision about whether you wanted to renovate and maintain the affordability.
Well, the decision has been made to renovate and do, renovate and maintain them. It's just that, for the reasons the city attorney mentioned, the only thing that we're here for at this time is approval of the acquisition, the bond financing for the acquisition.
Where would we find that commitment to renovate, if we were interested in looking?
I don't know if there is one at this point, other than, as a 501(c)(3) organization, it is subject to the federal tax laws to follow its mission of providing low and affordable, low and moderate income housing.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Crowder, if I could make a friendly amendment.
Absolutely.
You know, I really don't think we know enough about this, even though we're not even going to be obligated for it. I think we need more information here, because I don't feel good about voting for something that you don't know the answers, and I don't know the answers either. So I'd like to postpone this.
So what is it, what is it exactly?
Mr. Branch, it's in your district, so I'd like to ask...
Yeah, so for me, my concern is, a lot of HELP contracts expire after 40 years. And that's the issue we have with Sir Walter. Luckily, someone has come in, decided to purchase it, and they put additional 40 years on it. With that being said, they're coming up on the point, and probably within the next three years, if they put a HELP contract on in 1981, and which is going to expire. So that means Section 8 goes away, and what happens to these residents? Because one thing we're losing is affordable housing.
Yes.
So putting my bond counsel hat on, is that this purchase can go forward without any approval. All we are, all we are asking for is that the tax-exempt bond approval for the federal IRS approval. So whether you approve it or not, they could obviously go forward. I realize you don't want to approve it if you don't know all the facts, and I appreciate that.
And with all due respect, you wouldn't be down here tonight if it wasn't some benefit to your client in some way, so...
Oh, absolutely. There's a tax, $900,000, $10,000,000 of the $22 million is going to be taxed, you know, we are requesting the local approval.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm just not sure what the, what's the consequence of not approving. He's saying that they can buy it anyway.
So certainly, they could, but they'd have to use a different financing mechanism. Without your approval, my understanding, from what bond counsel has communicated, is that they cannot, that either they would have to go to another jurisdiction, another level of government to get the approval. And there are actually three levels that they could have chosen. The governor of North Carolina could approve, the county could approve, or Raleigh. The county, I'm told, has a policy that if the jurisdiction is within a city, that it leaves the municipality the right to have that hearing and make the determination. Certainly, you could continue the matter until your next meeting to allow the applicant to provide more information.
Dottie, do we run, do they run into the same May 15 deadline?
I'm not aware of any deadline. None of the materials that have been provided show a deadline, but our...
Yeah, we do want to close as soon as possible. However, we have, if you close the public hearing or continue the public hearing to the next session, we can do that. I mean, I want to be as...
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, to, because I'd definitely like to know about the HELP contract, when it expires, and if it's within the next three years, what is the next step?
Okay.
So, to clarify, though, it appears from the materials we've been given that it's the Atlantic Housing, what is it?
Housing Foundation.
Yes.
Which is a 501(c)(3) that works to build and maintain affordable housing. Like, that is their job.
Right, right. Just like the company that purchased Sir Walter, that is their job. But they gave us their next steps. I just want to know what their next steps are. Because some companies, that's their job, but then they go and they sell it.
I agree with Mr. Branch, because we don't want to be in the same situation that we found ourselves in before, up against a wall with timeline and no place for these folks to go if they change their mind.
Fair enough.
So two weeks.
Second, my motion.
Okay. Second. To hold it for two weeks.
Two weeks.
Do you want me to keep the...
Okay.
Mad Attorney, should we keep the hearing open, or...
You have closed the hearing. You could reopen it and continue it for two weeks. That would allow public comment beyond just the applicant.
Okay. So we close the hearing.
But you got to open it.
You got to open it.
You, we have closed the hearing. You would need to reopen the hearing.
Okay, we'll reopen the hearing, and bring it back in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. And the, and I did talk with Assistant Attorney Brandon Poole in advance of this. I want to be sure I answer all your questions. And so I'm trying to make a list, or can we, can I touch base with the city manager's office about all questions at some point?
The clerk.
The clerk, okay.
We're not trying to give you a hard time.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I understand. I've been here before and been denied for bond issues before, so...
Okay, Mr. Stevenson.
We've got two questions. One is for our staff, and that is, can we do any kind of basic research just to satisfy ourselves that these people are operating in good standing?
Certainly, we can provide a report back on what we, what we can find about these folks.
And again, nothing against you, we just don't know.
I understand.
Second one is, there's a, the second paragraph talking about AHF, talks about an extensive list of benefits that it offers to academic scholarships, to residents, vocational training, onsite committee centers, care for senior citizens, after-school programs, ESL. I mean, it's in here for a reason, I guess, to convince us that this is a good thing. But is there a commitment to any of these programs?
I believe under their, I don't believe there is any written commitment in, I guess, if you require us to give that in some contract or something. But I don't believe, until this point, there has been any need for a written commitment, or, other than, someone putting it on a piece of paper, "I commit to do this." There's no contractual obligation to that.
You put it in here for a reason.
Right, because, because as a 501(c)(3) organization, that's what it does.
Yeah.
But, but not here, but maybe...
No, we plan on doing it here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sure, thanks. Okay, next, we have STC 0118 Kent Road Right-Away.
Jason Myers in the Department of Transportation. This is a request to close a small section of access right-of-way next to Kent Road in southwest Raleigh. That doesn't show up very well. I'm going to draw on here. That is 440, that is Western Boulevard, and Avant Ferry is here, and this, I just circled it there, is near the end of Kent Road where it tees into Kaplan Drive. There is, this is an aerial photo, recently, the red-hatched area is the area of current right-of-way that would be abandoned if this was approved. And to give a little bit of context, this is the plat map for the subdivision, the section of Kentwood from the mid-1950s. And you can see that the alignment of the street down here curved, and it appears as if the intention back then was to have Kent Road tee into Onslow Road in a roughly 90-degree intersection. As we know now, Onslow does not connect to Kent, and Kent tees into Kaplan at a different angle at a 90 degrees. So that little remnant of right-of-way was never constructed, and the applicant is asking to have that abandoned from a distance 14 feet behind the existing back of curb into their property line. These are the conditions for a permanent street closure, as articulated in the comprehensive plan, that the closure will not compromise the integrity of the street network, nor lead to a loss of connectivity. It will not impair the ability to provide utility service. There are three conditions that we're recommending you place on this for existing utilities. They may or may not be exactly in the area to be abandoned. We haven't done, made able to do a survey to find out where they are, but they're all very close. There's some stormwater infrastructure, electrical power infrastructure, and some communication lines. I think it's spectrum, I believe. And then they're all right near the edge there. The closure will not, the next condition is that the closure will not adversely affect the impact, or adversely impact the health, safety, or welfare, and that it is not in conflict with historic development commission policy, and that you determine it's in the public interest. Any questions about the application before we open the hearing?
No. Okay. It's very steep there.
Yes. Would you prefer to leave the map up, or these conditions up?
The map.
Okay.
Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Closing of Kent Road Right-Away.
Motion to approve.
Let me close the hearing. It's okay. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, next, we have a sidewalk petition on Winthrop Drive.
Mayor, council, we suggest really just a brief presentation on this item before we open the hearing.
Sorry, I'm a little jolly on this one.
Name's James Plesher with Engineering Services. I have along with me Talal Shashbender, who is Engineering Services Supervisor at your disposal. This is the Winthrop Drive sidewalk petition. A little bit of a project overview and history on this. It was initiated in July 2017, the most recent version of it. This has been petitioned three times total. The petitioner on this request requested the sidewalk go from West Milbrook Road on the north side to Sleepy Hollow Drive on the south side. It's a standard six-foot sidewalk with two-and-a-half-foot setback on the east side of Winthrop Drive of and in the voting, successful with 26 owners involved total, with 13 returning yes votes, six returning no votes, and seven not returning a vote at all. The previous petitions for this project, in 2013, we petitioned this project, and it returned with a 70% yes vote, but at the time, the threshold for sidewalk projects was 75%, so it failed. In 2014, it was petitioned again with a 48% return, which the requirement at that time was 50% plus one, so it did fail a second time as well. In the 2014 petition, we, the department gave a recommendation of a sidewalk from Milbrook to Sleepy Hollow on the east side, and then from Sleepy Hollow to Rembrandt. It would jump to the west side. We believe that had some adverse impacts on voting for that section, which led to the failure. In the 2013 vote, there was no recommendation given. It was just an open-ended, "Would you like a sidewalk?" Some of the benefits to the community would be, on the north side, we have connectivity to the Wooton Meadow Park off Milbrook Road, Pleasant Valley Shopping off Milbrook as well, and Creedmore Crossing Shops is at the intersection of Creedmore and Milbrook. Both those locations, the Pleasant Valley Shopping and the Creedmore Crossing Shopping, has transit stops for bus and go-triple buses. To the south, we have potential connectivity to York Elementary and the Brookhaven Nature Park. Safety and services, this would, this project would improve sightlines along the road for pedestrians and motorists. It would minimize utility conflicts with the two-and-a-half-foot setback and the east side of the, of the, of the road, and all sidewalks and ramps would be ADA compliant, of course. Here we have the petition map on the current 2017 petition that we're here to discuss today, and the voting results. You can see Sleepy Hollow to the left and Milbrook all the way to the right there with the sidewalk on the east side, which would be on the bottom of the page here. Here we have a little proximity map. The orange, or not orange, fuchsia is existing sidewalk on Milbrook, and that runs all the way to Pleasant Valley Road and Creedmore Road on the east and west. And we see a little Pleasant Valley Shopping, the Wooton Meadow Park, and Creedmore Crossing Shops there, labeled up top. And then below, we have Brookhaven and York Elementary. And also on the south there by Brookhaven and York Elementary, we have some existing sidewalk that I placed in there in fuchsia as well. These are some sight pictures. This is at the north end, looking towards Milbrook Road. There, you can see the sightline issues from some overgrown brush in the right-of-way. There is 15-foot of right-of-way on the shoulder available. Here's another picture of the overgrowth in right-of-way, which would improve the aesthetics of the street and the neighborhood. And you see a utility pole right in the middle, and it would help reduce any kind of conflict with utilities. In the middle section here of the project, the east side would be on the right side where the sidewalk would go, two-and-a-half-foot setback on a six-foot sidewalk. And you can see these, these... see, these cars are parked actually on the street and not driving, so there is street parking here, which reduces the travel lanes on the street. And, let's see, here is a vertical sightline obstruction that we have near the southern end of the project, looking up Sleepy Hollow, you can see where oncoming traffic could come over the hill in a hurry into pedestrians walking in the street as is now, and the sidewalk would be installed on the right side here in this picture. And we can go back for any kind of reference if you'd like, and that's all I have today. Any questions we can open up for?
Can you, can you explain why the east side of the street was chosen for the sidewalk as opposed to the other side, because it looks like most of the people who voted yes are on the side where the sidewalk isn't going.
Most of the people what? I'm sorry.
Most of the people who voted for the sidewalk are not going to have it going through their yards, unless I'm looking at that wrong.
Typical, I want a sidewalk, but I want it over there, not over here.
But I want to know if there, what the reason is for putting it on one side versus the other.
I can gladly address that. The west side has more slopes, and you can perhaps tell a little bit from this photo that you can see this flatter area, and you have more grading upwards, and so we minimize the amount of grading, and there's also, there's more utilities, it's not shown, yeah, this photo here would show there's more power poles on this side, you know, further down, and you can definitely tell the upgrades, steep grades, so there's more flat room area to accommodate a sidewalk on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess, I mean, it makes sense, it looks like on the Sleepy Hollow end, there's no existing sidewalk to tie into there, so that would be a future project then.
Exactly, and, you know, when, although we, the petitioner did not request to extend the sidewalk this time from Sleepy Hollow to Rembert, but that does not preclude us from considering future requests to add the sidewalk, and as James alluded to, it seems that in two thousand thirteen, the residents, you know, there is, the residents extending from Sleepy Hollow to Rembert, there was, I think, six yeses and one no, and in two thousand fourteen, when we made recommendation to switch to the west side, they came back with more nos, so.
Okay.
So we believe that it is possible that in the future, they would request a sidewalk on their side, because there is a side distance issues, and, you know, for pedestrians, you know, and for safety issues, so I think it will provide more connectivity to the school in the future.
So maybe this will create additional impetus to make the connectivity happen?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the hearing and ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this item. Come on down. And anyone that wants to speak to this item, if you want to come on down and sit in the front, and just go ahead, and when you start, give your name and address for the clerk, please.
Hi, my name is Sydney Lanham, and I live on five eight two zero Winthrop Drive. So I would like to say that I would request that you vote no for the sidewalk. They actually had a picture of my house, it was the first picture, and if you had seen that, it did, we have like bushes set on our house, and it would be like, I think, tearing up the bushes, and I did actually go to York Elementary, and I live close to York Elementary, but that sidewalk wouldn't have really helped me when I was walking there, or if I were to, because it stops at Sleepy Hollow, and there would still be like a lot of road left. I think that the sidewalk is actually like irrelevant, like, or not needed, because our street is actually pretty long as is, and there's kids in our neighborhood, but they don't really, like, have a problem with walking on the street, because, I mean, our neighborhood itself has a lot of trees, and has a lot of pretty environment that would be like torn up or be gone for this project. I think that this money could be used like other stuff that might be, have like more relevance to just like Raleigh in general, than just having a sidewalk that really kind of just stops and doesn't help like the kids as much with getting to school, or just like it tears up our environment, and it just kind of is unneeded, and I'm like, I'm coming from a child's point of view, and I have a sister who also, she's a runner, and she runs around our neighborhood anyway, and she has, like, nothing's ever happened to her, and our neighborhood as is, is like a really safe neighborhood anyway, and I feel like that the sidewalk would just be unneeded, it's not necessary to be there. I mean, I feel like it being there would not benefit the people in our neighborhood as much as it would like not benefit. Also, like, like you said, when you were talking to them, you had mentioned that most of the people who had voted yes, the sidewalk didn't go through their street, and it goes through my neighborhood, and like, I have a dog, and he'll be like out there, and like, that might not help him either, and I, I mean, I just felt like it wasn't needed, and coming from my point of view, I felt like it just really would have not benefited us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Question, did you say fifty-eight oh two Rembert?
Five eight two zero, yes.
Five eight?
Winthrop Drive, yeah.
Well, not Rembert.
No, Winthrop.
Winthrop.
Yes.
Thanks.
Sorry, not Winthrop.
Okay. So is there anyone else that likes to speak to this issue? Come on up, Mike, and...
Good evening, thank you for your time. One thing I just want to highlight real quick-
And don't forget to give your name and address for the clerk.
I'm Andrew Johnson, I live fifty-eight twenty-four Winthrop Drive, I live next to Sydney there. One thing I wanted to point out was the previous petitions were actually not the same request, they, as you mentioned, they extended all the way to Rembert Drive, and they were not able to accrue the vote, so this, this is about the third time around, so it's kind of, it's a, for lack of a better term, it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere at the moment. Me and my wife walk that every day, we have an eighteen-month-old in the stroller. I'm not going to argue with some of the safety aspects, but I think that's really the heart of the issue, is excessive speed. There's been traffic studies in this neighborhood, and with excess of sixty miles an hour on a twenty-five mile an hour road, there's other opportunities to put three-way stops, speed bumps, other deterrents to prevent the cut-through traffic, it's a big cut-through, such as maybe right-turn only on the Milbrook Road, and just from a personal standpoint, I live next to them, and to their point, yeah, most of the route is flat, but my property's not. I've done some elevation shots from top of curb, and I've got thirty-eight foot that range anywhere from two foot to three foot, twenty foot of frontage with one to two foot, and another thirty-eight foot that are seven inches in our driveway is close to a foot, so this would be a substantial impact to my property, grading driveway, potential wall, as I mentioned, we have a toddler, I'm not keen of having a three-foot wall in front of my house, then with, and put a fence in front of the house, I don't think that's very attractive, but those are just our thoughts, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that...
Yeah, good evening, hi, my name's Sarah Lanham, and I live at fifty-eight twenty Winthrop Drive. My other daughter wanted to come tonight, but she was unable to come, she said, "Just make sure it's passionate, and that your reasons are concrete," which I thought was, you know, she was trying to attempt, her attempt at humor, but in any event, I had sent an email with some photos of our property previously, and I hope you all had a chance to review that. One of the things I also wanted to point out on one of the pictures, the one that was looking north from the intersection at Sleepy Hollow, what that picture doesn't actually show is that, that is actually a ravine that drops way off to the, and there's not even an eight-and-a-half-foot berm there to begin with currently, that would, there would need to be some considerable augmentation to that area, and, you know, I would think a big cost. When you talk about site, you know, limitations and things like that, I would think that there are way less intrusive ways of taking care of site concerns, in other words, tree trimming or something that's a little bit less intrusive than building a sidewalk. Years ago, I used to work with the Department of Transportation, I get it, I know y'all own our Right-Away in that part, you know, that encroaches into that part of the yard, I know that's not necessarily our property, but when you think about, when you're going to do a project like this, you need to take into account the public benefit, and balance that out with the impact on the people who it's being affected, and I am not sure you can, there's a compelling reason for this sidewalk as it stands, because it really, you know, you talk about the shopping and all of that, I don't, I don't know, I've never walked up Milbrook, I mean, Milbrook is a very busy road, and I don't know that people would want to just walk through our neighborhood up to Milbrook to walk up to the Food Lion or to the Wooton Park, which there's nothing there right now currently, if anybody knows much about Wooton Park, so I don't know that those are compelling reasons to do this project, and also banking on future possible petitions for additional sidewalk through the neighborhood, because there's no guarantee that people are going to vote for that. As Andrew pointed out, and as the presenters pointed out, that, that one that had extended all the way down to Rembert had been voted down already two times previously, and I think it really is important that you really, that you pointed out that the people on the opposite side of the road were the yeses, you know, if, it would be interesting to see if it had been flipped, and if the people on that side would vote yes for a sidewalk going through their own yard, so I think what you have to think about is, if this was your property, and you would say, "Okay, I get it, I can understand if there would be a sidewalk, if I believe, I would vote yes on my own property if I really felt like it, the benefit outweighed the impact," and that there was, there were a lot of reasons, and for the, you know, and also taking care of fiscal concerns and, and taking that into account to be good stewards of the public fisc. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thanks. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing, and bring it back. I'm trying to figure out how far this is to York.
It's a good ways to York, from there. But I would like to point out that one of the neighbors mentioned, there is a three-way stop at Winthrop and Sleepy Hollow already right now.
Yeah, this is in my district, and several people had asked me, you know, how, how am I going to vote on this, and this was one where I said, "Well, I want to listen and hear what people at the hearing have to say," because I'm familiar with the area, and it is a beautiful wooded area with a lot of trees and vegetation, and it kind of seems to me that, you know, they've been, some people have been trying to get a sidewalk there for a while, but it never quite passes, and so they keep bringing it back and changing things, and the fact that the majority of people who are in favor of it are on the side of the street where it's not going to go, I'm going to have to vote no on this.
I'm going to make the motion to approve.
So I will second that, we see a lot of these, and that there's always a mix of opinions, there's a mix of topographic conditions, there's no perfect flat area. We do have significant com-plan policies that talk about improving the walkability of our neighborhoods, particularly to destinations, a future destination will be the Wooton Meadow Park, but we've been working on that, and I have talked to residents in the area who are looking forward to that connection, they also talk about safety getting to York Elementary, you know, the folks here have followed a process that we've set up, they've, they've tried it different ways, but they have followed the process, they've, and so I, I believe that this is, in the long term, in the long run, people will find this, maybe we need to be talking about multi-way stops here to slow down traffic, but this will improve safety, it will, again, it'll increase the opportunities, I think, once people see the sidewalk in, and it gets established, and people get used to it, that it is, it is a community benefit, and they'll want to extend it, so I'm gonna, again, I'll second the motion.
I have a couple of questions. Why cannot this be built on the other side of the road?
You said it was topographic reasons.
Well, topographic reasons can be dealt with from an engineering perspective, can they not?
Yes, sir, however, on the east side, there are less topographic changes than there are on the west side.
I understand that, but, I mean, is it a difference in cost, is that what the deal is?
Cost would be one, number two would be more easements required, perhaps if we have to grade further back to, you know, to match the, to get to a point to where we match the existing.
Well, I tend to agree with Counselor Mendel, I mean, the folks that have requested this live on the other side of the road, I'm familiar with this area as well, I actually used to live on the other side of Milbrook Road, so I'm, I, nobody loves sidewalks more than I do, I mean, one of the reasons, I really do.
Really?
Well, but I, but I also appreciate the impact this will have on people, and it strikes me that the people that supported this aren't even here tonight, and it's not going to be on their side of the road, so I'm going to be inclined to vote no against this.
People that supported it on both sides of the road, so I wouldn't pit it as one or the other, there's, it's a pretty even mix, but, okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
No. Five-three.
Five-three. Okay.
So, the motion passes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So we have petition annexations, we have three different ones, we'll take them separately, sixty-five oh four West Lake Anne Drive, is there anyone here to speak, we'll open the hearing, is there anyone here to speak to that item? Six-five oh four West Lake Anna, Lake Anne Drive, okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Motion approved.
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next, we have seventy-two hundred Pine Crest Road, is there anyone here to speak to that item, we'll open the hearing. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and lastly, we have eighty twenty-nine and eighty-one thirty-one Creedmore Road, we'll open the hearing, is there anyone here to speak to those items?
Nope.
Okay, okay, we'll close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next we have the rezoning Z three eighteen Carson Street.
Good evening, this is a request to rezone one point seven-four acres from I X three, that's your industrial mixed-use three-story height limit, to R ten, and, it's a combination, I'm sorry, of R ten and I X three, so that northern portion there currently is R ten to R X three, that's your residential mixed-use three-story with conditions.
I'm sorry, it's the middle parcel?
So this, this whole thing, and just this piece up top is R ten now.
Okay.
Right? It's split zone, and your planning commission recommends approval, and your five-point C A C also recommends approval, so there's just a bigger look at that map, so this is Reeves, turns to Pershing, Sunrise, and then Carson comes down here and Dead End, so this is the railroad line that runs parallel to Capitol. And you can see here, your five points N C O D is located on the west side of Carson here, and that whole area is zoned R ten, and then you have some R ten to the north of this site in question, and then also some heavy industrial, as well as industrial mixed use, and then just a little bit of office mixed use up there on Pershing Road. So here's a look at that site from an aerial perspective, so again, you can see single family along Sunrise, that industrial, heavy industrial and industrial mixed use to the east and north of the site, and the railroad tracks down to the south. A couple of views of the site from Carson Street, so looking in your, top two pictures looking north towards the site, and then in your bottom two pictures looking south, so, and those bottom photos looking away from the neighborhood down towards the site, and then some views- The big change is that now you can have residential on the ground floor, which industrial mixed use prohibits, and then you have some, not a significant change in your setback build to your retail intensity, office intensity, industrial intensity. You're losing all of that entitlement in favor of your ground floor retail, your ground floor residential opportunity. So your future land use map here is a medium-density residential for the southern portion of the site and low-density on the northern portion, and there's no urban form designation here. So the conditions proposed limit use to residential only, civic building type is prohibited, the number of units is limited to forty-five, and at least two of those must be in the form of detached house. And then only, the only building type allowed on the northern ninety feet of the parcel is the attached house. So if you go back and look at, that aligns pretty well with your future land use map, and also puts you, so there are single-family houses up here, and so puts two, single-family houses adjacent there to the existing single-family on the east side of Carson with your site. So again, you can see detached only in that northern portion. So this is consistent with the plan overall, inconsistent with your future land use map, 'cause you're getting a greater density than your low-density really in tens, but overall consistent with the plan. And again, your planning commission and your five-point CAC both recommend approval. Can I answer questions?
I have one question. With the inconsistencies in the General Assembly law, what, if we were to approve this, what, is there any impact?
So there is a consistency statement and a proposed motion in the agenda backup materials, and overall, the council could make a determination that overall, the rezoning, the zoning amendment is consistent. And that would be, that would take care of any issues or concerns. It's a comprehensive review.
I have a few questions. Do we know how much higher the topography's gonna be after they bring in the fill dirt for this?
I can't answer that. I think that's a question you might wanna ask the applicant.
Okay. I guess, yeah, I have several questions then for the applicant.
Okay. Any more questions for staff before we open the hearing? Thank you. Okay, we'll open the hearings. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in support of this case?
Great. Good evening, Mayor. Counsel Michael Birch, Boris Russell here on behalf of the applicant. Again, Bynum did a great job describing our request, proposing RX three to allow for purely residential development, a mix of two single-family, the rest for sale townhouse. I think the staff report does a great job of identifying the benefits of the rezoning that includes eliminating a number of uses that are incompatible with the neighborhood that are currently allowed in the IX District, industrial, retail, heavy retail, those types of uses. It also notes that it provides additional housing and also housing options in close proximity to an established neighborhood transit, proximity to downtown. And also, the conditions that are a part of the case, which are a result of our conversations with certainly the CAC and also our nearby neighbors, ensure an appropriate transition by locating those two single-family homes on the north side of the site. I'll note that the inconsistency is because the future land use map designates the northern portion of the site as low-density, and it also designates all of the five points area as low-density. I think the staff report acknowledges that really all of the five-point zoning is inconsistent with that designation, given their R ten zoning and their lot sizes. So what we're providing on the northern end of this property is consistent with the lot sizes in the five points district. So I think we're certainly compatible with the surrounding area. And again, staff report notes our consistency with key comp plan policies on density transitions, additional housing options, consistency with the area plan. So certainly, wanna be able to address any questions you may have.
Yeah, I mean, I think all in all, you know, considering the neighborhood, I think this is a good plan, but I just had some questions, just for clarification. Do you know how much higher the topography is gonna be after the fill dirt is brought in?
Again, and I'll ask, well, I've gotten, can you get us back to the site pictures just so we can have a sense from Carson Street?
I think that's the wrong.
Yeah, that's the wrong, the right one.
Great, and I just wanted to put these pictures up so you have a sense of the site from Carson Street, but then I'll ask Roland Gammon to address your question.
Roland Gammon, twenty-one Glenwood Avenue. The site's relatively flat. There's a swale that goes through it, which is an open drainage area. We'll have to pipe beneath that. The only fill is gonna be basically to level out the situation. We're not gonna raise the units. We had a lot of talk with the, particularly one of the nice ladies who lives directly across here, probably is the closest person, and she was concerned, but these are three-story townhomes, and something that we've seen works great against industrial on one side, against commercial on the other, and it makes a nice transition to that single-family up at the top. So the answer is, there's really no effective fill, per se, other than just what is required for the normal site development. We're not any kind of flood risk. We have to elevate for that purpose.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Also, just wanted to understand what sort of plans there are for stormwater, addressing stormwater issues, lighting issues, and entrances and exits onto the properties.
Right, so I'll take those in reverse order. So from an access standpoint, access will be from Carson Street.
Okay.
You know, certainly the, I imagine the single-family homes will have their individual driveways from Carson, and then the townhome development would have its access off of Carson as well. From a lighting standpoint, again, particularly on the north side, we'll have those two single-family homes. And again, from a site lighting standpoint, we're proximate to R ten across the street, so the code regulates both height of lighting and proximity to those districts, as well as the amount of kind of lumens at the ground level, even against public right-of-way as well.
Okay.
With regard to stormwater, Mr. Gammon mentioned that kind of swale that goes across the site here, so it doesn't drain towards the neighborhood, drains down here, and then goes, I believe, under Capitol Boulevard.
You can next, about the railroad.
Yeah, yeah. And so certainly from a stormwater standpoint, as Mr. Gammon mentioned, we'll pipe that from a bypass standpoint, but then the impervious that is being put on the site will be treated, detained in accordance with the UDO.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support of this case? Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing, bring it back.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Okay, next we have rezoning Z three eighteen Carson Street, I'm sorry, Z thirty-two seventeen Rock Quarry Road.
Yes.
Went so well, thought I'd do it again.
This is a request to rezone just over fourteen acres from commercial mixed use with a three-story height limit and some conditions, and also RX, residential mixed use three stories with conditions, I'm sorry, two RX three-story with conditions, and the shod overlay that's in place here would remain, and it does cover the bulk of the property. The planning commission recommends approval, the South CAC offered a split vote. I just wanna say upfront a couple of things, 'cause you had some discussion about this at your last meeting. The developer has applied for a four percent tax credit here, and that process requires action by May eleventh to secure credit. And then during your April seventeen meeting, you approved funds towards this same project. When you said the public hearing, you also asked the applicant and transportation staff to get together and have some conversations about those issues. I believe, Mr. Branch, that request came from you. That meeting did happen, I think, a very productive conversation. So you can see here the site, there's a lot of red on the slide, good grief, currently commercial mixed use with that same, on the north side of forty, which runs right through here, more commercial down here, just in the embrace of the site here, and then also some R four to the south. R six developed as residential on the west side here. There's also a piece of property held by the Triangle Greenways Council. And then on the east side of Rock Quarry, you have a mix of uses, some industrial mixed use, some neighborhood mixed use, and also some residential zoning. So real mix there. And I also say, Mr. Jarvis is here to answer questions, if you have affordable housing questions particularly, and also I know transportation staff is here. So here's a look at that aerial site, aerial of the site currently undeveloped. A couple of views of the site. So looking into the site from Rock Quarry, so you're just north of the shopping center there, looking northwest, kind of across that shopping center towards the site, and your views in that northern part. And then the shopping center itself is shown in this bottom-left image, and then the view down Merrick, or north on Merrick, looking into the site. So the, while the street address is Rock Quarry, the access is taken from Merrick Street here, which is kind of in the shopping center. And then a couple of views from Merrick Street into the site, the view from forty, and then also the view towards the site along Cross Link. So the change here, the big change that the rezoning sees to make is to allow apartments, so those are not allowed now. The current zoning would allow single-family or townhouse, and the, our kind of napkin penciling suggests that you could get quite a number of townhouses there, but the applicant is actually asking for less than that. The build-two changes a little bit with the expectation of a different building type, and then your retail and office intensity are going down considerably here. So remember, in your residential mixed use, that retail option can only be exercised on the ground floor, in a corner unit, at the intersection of two public streets. So, you know, that's kind of a one-shot deal on this particular site. So very limited capacity there. On your future land use map, this is community mixed use, you're consistent with that, and then your urban form map puts Rock Quarry as a transit emphasis corridor, and the site generally as part of the mixed-use center here at Rock Quarry and Cross Link. So again, I mentioned those existing conditions that prohibit your apartment building type, and they also provide for a fifty-foot protective yard along the R four property to the south. So keep in mind, under this entitlement, when this condition was put in place, there was a pretty significant retail, commercial entitlement there. You weren't talking about putting beds next to beds, you're talking about putting shops next to beds. And then your proposed conditions, no more than two hundred units, you have some limits on your light pole height, and adjacent, where adjacent to residential properties, and then a requirement for a pedestrian path to connect the property to the shopping center to the south. Overall, consistent with your plan, and again, your planning commission recommending approval, your South CAC with a split vote. I believe a lot of those concerns were related to access and traffic. Can I answer any questions about this case? Can you, Bynum, do you have any idea what consists in that shopping center currently? Oh, that's a great question.
I can answer that.
I have looked at that, I believe there's a grocery store and a pharmacy there.
Yeah, grocery store, pharmacy, library, barber shop, police substation, restaurants. There's a bank further down, there's fast food further down, and there's some more retail outlets being built across the street from that shopping center, across Cross Link Corridor, behind the gas station.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the hearing and ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support of this case.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Isabel Maddox, P.O., Box nine four six, Raleigh, two seven six oh two. I'm here tonight with Dustin Mills of Taft Mills Group, the developer. Also here is Matt Louder, our engineer, Jonathan La Court, our architect, and Jeff Slick-McClure, our traffic engineer. This case was brought to allow Taft Mills, Taft Mills Group, an affordable developer out of Greenville, to do some affordable housing, which, in this location. Now, we do have a Rock Quarry Road address, but the access at Rock Quarry is controlled, so we aren't able to access Rock Quarry there, 'cause it's controlled because of its proximity to I forty. We propose RX three, which is basically a down zoning. The current zoning does not allow apartments. Could do townhouses there, we could do condominiums there, but we can't, it can't be done as apartments. So as you saw from Bynum's information, they could do maybe three hundred and forty-two units, and we're proposing a maximum of two hundred. But I wanna turn this over to my client, Dustin Mills, to give you a presentation on this case. And Bynum, if I go to my slideshow, do I hit the menu? I don't wanna.
Don't get it.
Yeah, I brought some slides, yeah. And I can find them. It should say my assistant's name, Mary Gallicky. Is that right here? Yeah, Mary Gallicky. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Dustin Mills, my address is twenty-two seventeen Stanthornburg Road. I'm here tonight requesting rezoning on behalf of myself and my partner, Tom Taft. As Isabel stated, we're here seeking this rezoning to develop a hundred and eighty-unit affordable new construction development that will serve families in the area. We have secured the tax-exempt bonds that we would require and are seeking the four percent tax credits that staff mentioned earlier. In looking at our background, I've personally developed about seventy-five tax credit projects under the program and which we're pursuing. And we, as a company, have partnered with the city previously, most recently in the Wakefield Development in North Raleigh, eighty units, new construction. It was a nine percent tax credit deal, leased up in forty-five days. So we proved the need there. But where we are today is we anticipate that we will have some pushback. We've been working on this project for about eighteen months. CAC was a mixed vote, a split vote, and we face the question of primarily traffic concerns and ingress and egress. Unfortunately, the site, as you can see, the Merrick Drive is the primary point of ingress egress, and because we're limited by land conservation and some single-family homes, our really only other second points of ingress egress are a church and a shop, the shopping center. We've had productive conversations with the church and the shopping center. We have not been able to reach an agreement with them. Where we stand tonight is we've got a deadline looming to get the financing of May the eleventh, right around the corner, and our primary point tonight that we'd like to make is we will, we've shown a willingness to work with our potential neighbors to address the concern of ingress egress. We've made formal offers, they voted on it on multiple occasions, and we keep coming back, trying to figure out something that's mutually beneficial. But you have our word tonight that we are committed to doing that. And I think it's important to note that just because the deadline of May the eleventh is looming, that doesn't mean, from a timing standpoint, we've got that doesn't mean, from a timing standpoint, we've got probably twelve to eighteen months before this project in its paper form will come before staff to even review the plans for approval. So I offer that because that gives us the necessary time to continue working with the neighbors to reach an agreement that we, you know, believe is mutually beneficial and gives us the points of ingress egress that we need. We're not in opposition to providing a secondary point of ingress egress. We would have signed the easement agreement by now if we had been able to do that. From our standpoint, we also heard about traffic. Staff's own report had such a dramatic decrease between the existing zoning and the requested zoning that we didn't think the neighbors would believe it, so we commissioned a study with Raimi Kemp, a third-party traffic engineer. It was not a full TIA, it was basically kind of a snapshot look of what apartments, units compared to apartment units, whereas staffs looked at the overall zoning case. And they basically came to the decision that this proposed project would add about two cars per minute to the existing traffic patterns. The thing that we asked our traffic engineer that they did not consider was the fact that this is affordable housing and that it does have direct access to two points of public transportation, which is critical in our business, which we think would further skew the traffic in our favor as far as less traffic on the project. So we commissioned that study, we liked the results that we secured in that study, and we stand by them and hope that you will as well. It's very rare that we find as developers, and again, I'm twenty-one years in the business specifically tied to the development of affordable housing, I have not found a site like this that has that direct access via one property line to a food line shopping center, a Rite Aid, a public library, two points of public transportation, banking, shopping. I mean, it is the perfect site, in our opinion. And we have a market study to back it up. As many of you know, when we submit for funding through the agency, they require a market study. That market study came back extremely strong, and ultimately, you know, we feel like this is the ideal situation. Councilman Branch, in our most recent meeting, you asked us to meet with transportation. We met with transportation and the planning staff. I believe my takeaway, and Jason's here tonight, he can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but my takeaway from that meeting was if we could at least get a point of emergency, a stub for emergency access, for fire and life safety, that that would suffice as far as able to get approved through the site plan review process. We're here telling you in a public forum that we would commit to that, but our primary intent is to try to come up with some type of true full-access opportunity for traffic. So with that, I see my time's running long. I just want to reiterate the points that this is ideal from a public transportation standpoint. The city has supported us previously and continues to support us as well as other affordable developers, so we appreciate that. And at the end of the day, we've got an ideal site that we hope that you will share the support and consider granting us this rezoning even outside of the opposition that may be here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thirty seconds left, if anyone else wants to speak in support of this case?
Well, I might be, do you want seconds? I'm thirty seconds.
No.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
There you go. Hey, well, don't be cruel. Dan Coleman, 517 Rock Quarry Road. I'm not really speaking in support because this is somebody else's CAC, but Will Allen posted something about using this as an example of YIMBY and NIMBY, and I replied to him, so I'm going to use that as my point here. This is not a case of NIMBY, this is a case of how best to address egress issues surrounding this site. Unfortunately, things have been done, could have been done better, where in the church, this certain family, the shopping center, and the developer, and the city could have sat down in a design charrette earlier that would have facilitated the development of a common theme that would protect all parties' interests and then brought everyone to a win-win goal line. It is not too late, putting every, it is not too late, but putting every case on a us-versus-them platform is not going to bring Raleigh and the talent we need to engage when we fit one million-plus new people in a box that those that end up living there won't feel like we used a shoehorned planning strategy. Can we try to put a different spin on matters where the community is trying to be accommodating, when the community is trying to be accommodating? When those that have the ability to pump reason into the debate, pump divisiveness instead does not help bring everyone together and leaves only winners and losers? Being the only people left standing when we could accomplish so much more with everyone walking away the better off for the process and the end result? I did not get into this matter until late, but I tell you, there is a way to bring this whole matter to a successful conclusion, but the city and really you, Mayor McFarland, have to step in and to bring the parties together. I would tell you, it's not too late, and the developer is not the odd man out so much as it is years of fear of not understanding that fighting City Hall is not the only game in town. The real game in town is working with City Hall. City Hall has a great deal to do with this, and that is why the City Hall has to conduct a design charrette to ensure that Walnut Trace does not end up being another Shaw Apartments. Not ensuring that the primary interest of Walnut Trace represents the quality of development that is obvious everywhere else throughout Walnut Trace will cause irreparable harm for years to come. Merrick Drive does not afford the entrance that this development and the community deserves, and the damage will hurt the church, some other people, and the city for many years to come. This part of the city does not need another Shaw Apartments. So Mayor, I think you're committed, the city's committed to, I'm not opposed to moving forward, but I do want you to bring certain people together and have a design charrette because it needs a better entrance.
But we can't get this sweet design.
But I know you can't beat them upside the head.
We know we can't.
But use your bully pulpit. I think you can bring them together, and I know that this crowd here is willing to do the best they can going forward.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all.
That's all good.
Please do that. And you got your, you and Cory can make this happen, but Mayor, I want you to take the lead on it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, is there anyone here, one here, that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? Okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, please come on down.
I'm Reverend Rochelle, a resident in southeast Raleigh, and I'm speaking...
Can you give your address to the clerk, please?
As a resident.
Can you give your address?
Two six zero five Adcox Place, Raleigh.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here because I have questions and concerns. I live in that area, and I already know that if I'm not on Rock Quarry Road by the Burger King by four o'clock PM any given day, it's going to take me twenty to twenty-five minutes to get to my residence at two six oh five Adcox Place. The traffic is thick. I do want to say I'm not against affordable housing. We need that. I've spoken often to the community, we need to find a way to get affordable housing. And my question is, are these apartments affordable housing or low-income housing? Is it a certain percentage going to be low-income? Those questions are in my head, so I would like to have someone address those questions because I don't want us to say, yes, put them up, and then only five or ten low-income people can get in. Like I say, I did not make the CAC meeting, so I didn't get to hear all of this if it were stated. So what I'd like to do is, I keep hearing this May 11 deadline, and it seems like we need to rush, rush, rush and make a decision, but I'm wondering if everyone could go back to the table and try to work out a solution to prevent additional traffic bombarding Rock Quarry Road. When we have concerts, I cannot take Rock Quarry Road home, and that's why I think you had a split in the vote. And we don't want it to go on record that we're not in favor of low-income housing and affordable housing. We are. We live there, and we know that the traffic is a concern. Those are my comments.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this case?
I am Sheila Alameen Khashoggi, 3715 Emma Style Lane, off from Rock Quarry Road. Like Reverend Rochelle said, it is hard to get down Rock Quarry Road about three-thirty, four o'clock. We cannot get access anything after four o'clock. When I pass, I go into Rock Quarry Road, that's the only way I can get to my house all the way down Barrio. When we go down there, we have to wait, 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 almost to five-thirty getting down there. These apartments, no matter how they will put it in, there is going to be a position, there is going to be opposition of getting in and out of Rock Quarry Road. I'm all for affordable housing, that's what I, you know, I really want in that area, but we have to come to a consensus of how we can do that. And the church traffic, they are not just there on Sunday, they're there on Mondays, they have food pantry on Tuesdays or Thursdays, they have services during the week. So that is a big church, so that is going to be a problem. Then you have the apartments on the other side as well. So there is a lot of consideration about being, putting those apartments right there. If we can all just come together, the church, the developers, and try to figure out how we can do, how we can do everything and get that traffic down because it's already terrible. Now, just imagine if a concert was there. You wouldn't, when a concert, I have to go seventy, all the way down, seven, go the back way towards Clating to Auburn Knight there, just to get into my subdivision. That's a long way. That I could just come, you can't even go down Poole Road because of concert. So it's going to be even triple the traffic in that area. So we can, like I say, I don't mind affordable housing, low-income housing, however they want to classify it, but we need to consider the residents that got to get through there. We already having a problem as it is. Yes, busing is there, but there's a lot of new residents in that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this case? Okay, seeing none, we will close the hearing and bring it back.
I have a question for the applicant.
Can I just respond to a couple of those?
Wait a minute, let Mr. Thompson ask a question.
Actually, your client.
Yeah.
So this is off-topic, but just affordable housing question, so obviously you're very experienced in this. So could you explain to us your thought process for the four percent versus nine percent tax credit?
Sure. When we look at a site, especially a site that this, it's rare to get a site this size. Most of the properties, for example, Wakefield that we did with the city of Raleigh's support was a six-acre property, so it was limited just by the size of the property as much as anything else. When you get to a hundred and twenty units or more, you have to switch over to the tax-exempt bond program because the tax credit, the nine percent tax credit, is limited to a hundred and twenty units. It just becomes a bigger deal. It's a little bit more of a challenge financially because it's a larger-scale deal. But when we found this particular site and looked at the market study, we could probably do double the amount of units that we're proposing and still lease them up. So we utilized the land as best we could without making every, you know, clear-cutting the site and addressing all of our stormwater on site. So it was a function of the demand, the land size, and trying to put together a pro forma or a financial analysis that works.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question for you. By right, right now, what could go there?
So right now, by right, townhome, there was a zoning case in 1999 that put conditions on this particular case, on this particular property, and right now, townhomes, condominiums, and then other non-residential uses are listed in a list of about twelve to fifteen uses that are approved. So technically, we looked at doing townhomes because quite honestly, we didn't want to subject ourselves to a rezoning if we didn't have to, but economically, we can't build a townhome, still keep it affordable, and then get the financing that makes economic sense. I don't know if that answered your question, but those are the two residential-related items that I can think of.
So if you were to do townhomes, they would be market rate, and about how many would be there?
Well, the zoning allows, and staff can tell me if I'm wrong, but from memory, I believe it allows up to three hundred and forty-two residential units. So if we could technically and hypothetically squeeze three hundred and forty-two townhomes onto that site, and I'm here telling you, honestly, I don't think you could. I think you could do about, you know, about what we're doing right now from a townhome standpoint, but that's what zoning allows, so it's more, it's significantly more than what we're proposing. We're capping our, this rezoning request at two hundred units, which means this site will, you know, until it's changed in the future, be capped at two hundred units if for some reason our financing fell through and we weren't able to get the deal. Our proposal to the Housing Finance Agency and in our funding request to the city was a hundred and eighty units, and we're capped at that because of our application has been formally submitted and that our market study was based on one hundred and eighty units.
And of those one eighty, I think you have nine of them at forty percent AMI?
That's right.
And then you have a hundred and seventy-one at sixty percent AMI?
That's right. So, I'm sorry.
Not that.
And if you don't mind, I'll add to that, the tax credit program to address the citizen's concern, the tax credit program at the nine percent and four percent level both require sixty percent and under of the area median income. They don't require forty percent. There's nothing that says I have to do forty percent units, but we wanted a percentage of them to gear towards the, what by definition is the extremely low income, whereas the sixty percent is definitionally low income. And so under that program, we're one hundred percent affordable units by definition, which means that all of the units that would be developed under the proposed, under the proposed community would fall within the low-income housing tax credit program, which supports the four percent tax credit, which is in addition to the tax-exempt bonds that we would be securing. So the citizen's concern about it not being affordable, I can state on the record, it's one hundred percent affordable, not only by definition but by financing mechanisms.
Okay.
A hundred percent low income.
That's correct. To further state, affordable is used a lot, but definitionally, the low-income housing tax credit, LIHTC, which it's called, and, you know, generally, is the low-income housing tax credit program. We would be requesting funding under that program, which means every single one of our units would be geared towards those making sixty percent or less of the AMI.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for, I guess it's for Travis or Ken. I would assume that access issue would be addressed as a site plan? Bynum's nodding, it's okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. All development standards, including access to the site, would be reviewed at time of site plan review.
Okay.
I mean, part of the issue is we want people to have access to transit because it may not, it certainly lowers the cost of living to not have to have a car, which is part of how we're trying to.
Travis, I have a question that may, you may know this, and I pray you do. If not, hopefully Michael can help you. There was a transportation bond to Witten Rock Quarry Road, and I know we're working with the state, and I understand that there was conversation here about they wouldn't go to site plan for another eight months or so. My question is, where are we with the project on Rock Quarry Road to widen it to try to remove some of the bottleneck from Farmville Shopping Center to Sunnybrook Road?
Yeah, I defer to transportation staff on that.
I figured.
If you recall, a few months ago, Eric Lamb spoke to you about an opportunity to incorporate that widening project in with the I-40 widening NCDOT is doing. That is still on track. We're working, we have a consultant working towards an environmental document that would allow us to enter into an agreement with NCDOT to build that project in conjunction with that. So that will be a few months before we're able to get that agreement formalized, and it'll be a few years before the project actually widened, and then we'll have a little bit more timeframe on the design build. But a design build is basically NCDOT handing over the contract to do a whole bunch of stuff in a certain amount of time, and exactly when the different improvements are phased is up to them to find the most cost-effective way to do it. So it won't be in the next eight months to have any of those improvements in place.
So we're talking two years?
To the completion of the project, I think it's more like three, three and a half years for certainty, but it could be they do this part of the project first, we don't know that. It'll be at least a year and a half, I think, and probably closer to... It'll be at least a year and a half, I think, and probably closer to three or so before the whole thing's done.
Okay. So my question for the applicant is, if this were to pass and you were to receive your funding, where would you start building?
We, I need to just explain a little bit. We would find out in August, we submit in May the 11th, we would find out in August from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. On a bond deal, typically, it will take about a year to get things like the plans submitted or designed, fully designed, submitted, all of the bond-related documents pinned down. And I say a year, typically, just from a municipal standpoint, the approvals will expand another six months beyond that. So about 18 months from August of this year before we would be literally doing any type of clearing or anything like that. And so, that's why I stand before you cautiously optimistic that we can resolve the points of ingress egress, but I have no way of knowing if that would be the case.
Okay.
So probably not quite as long as the timeline that Jason just outlined, but certainly not next month.
Okay.
We understand it's a pretty long, complicated process?
Yes, ma'am.
So, just to be clear for me, are you going to be connecting them to Merrick?
So, our primary point of ingress egress will be Merrick. That will be our front door, so to speak. That is a full-access, full-movement intersection. The benefit, if we were to ever be able to negotiate a secondary point of ingress egress with, say, the church, that would basically, we think that it wouldn't decrease the amount of cars that come onto the road, but what it would do is help prevent stacking at that particular intersection, which I think is what most folks are concerned with, is the impact on the intersection. And so, we have the full right of movement at Merrick, that would be our front door, that would be where if we, for example, were only able to negotiate a, an emergency access point, that would be the primary point of access. A secondary point would be if we could negotiate an easement with either the shopping center or the church to allow an easement over their property to provide access further up Crosslink.
So there's no access to Rock Quarry, not even a right-in, right-out?
No, sir. So Councilman Branch had mentioned, meeting with Transportation, in addition to meeting with city staff, we met with State DOT to discuss, in fact, Mr. Coleman that is here helps facilitate that meeting. And one of the questions that was brought to our attention was, could you access a secondary point on Rock Quarry Road? Some examples of similar points of ingress egress were offered, and DOT did not say absolutely not, no possibility, they just said that it would be a long involved process, and there's right-of-way issues there that are challenges. And just to be bluntly honest, it's a challenge for us, because we feel like we'd rather funnel our traffic out onto a secondary road like Crosslink, more so than pushing the majority of it out to Rock Quarry, which even if DOT did approve Rock Quarry, it would most likely be a right-in, right-out, which really, we didn't think would help with the traffic concern that the neighbors have. We felt like that would basically just be another access point. So we, the most ideal situation is to try to work something with the church to provide that secondary point of ingress egress, so that you avoid the stacking question. And our traffic engineer is here tonight, in case any specific and technical questions come up, she's here for consultation as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think I closed the hearing, I can't remember. I'll close it now. Bring it back.
One thing I've learned in Seattle, on the inner-city visit, is if we wait, they're still going to come. If we do nothing, prices are still going to go up. Seattle has a major homeless issue and affordability issue. This, the CAC vote expressed how I'm torn now with this. Knowing this neighborhood, knowing the traffic, knowing the challenges. But one thing I realized is that we have to make sure we do right by the next generation. And as much as I have my reservations, I have my concerns, I'm going to move in favor of this project for approval.
I'll second that.
Yeah. I'll second it also. I do appreciate everything you said, neighbors' concerns about congestion, it sounds like there is a road project that is funded, it's not going to happen overnight, this is a transit emphasis corridor, so there will be more, in addition to the road improvements, there'll be more transit improvements over time. I think that this is an opportunity that presents itself now, and the solutions to some of the problems that it creates will be offered in time. I do agree that this is overall, just in terms of a project that will do as little as possible to generate trips, being right next to so many neighborhood and supportive opportunities here, both shopping, library, this will create fewer impacts than in almost any other location. It'd be great if there was a second egress, it'd be great if Rock Quarry was finished now, it'd be great if the transit line was done tomorrow, but I think all those things will be coming, and so I'll support this project.
Yeah, I am, I was very impressed when I met with the applicant and stated to him at the time, I wish we had more developers who are interested in doing these types of things, and I think they've made a very good faith effort to work with the community, and I think it's worthy of our support.
Okay. The motion?
Yes.
Do you have a statement?
Yes, Mayor, and just to clarify the motion, it is to adopt both the, to allow the zoning and to adopt the consistency statement.
That's correct.
Okay, we need to read that. Well, she can just say to adopt?
To adopt the comprehensive plan and consistency statement.
He can simply say, as part of the motion, he's intending to adopt the consistency statement that's in the backup materials and to approve the.
As part of the motion, I agree to adopt the comprehensive plan and consistency statement. As part of the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
I have a question, since we just did that. The previous motion on Carson, we didn't do that.
No, and that's what I understood, the nature of the motion to be by Ms. Mendel was to, the motion for approval was for both the approval of the consistency statement as well.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, next we have Z-3517, also Rock Quarry Road.
So this is a, we had a lot of conversation about this when you set the hearing, that the hearing version was the initial submittal by the applicant. There's some ongoing issues about signatures on the subsequent offer that was considered by the CAC as well as the Planning Commission. And the later version focuses on the south end of the property, but we had to advertise the bigger version. The applicant, I believe, has written directly to you, each of you, as well as to me, and asks that the public hearing be continued to June 5th. And so, one question I have for you is if you really would like my presentation tonight, or if it might suit you better to hear that next month.
How many times have we extended this public hearing?
So, well, so this is the first night of the hearing, the hearing would be opened for the first time this evening. You did hold this at the table before setting the hearing for as long as you could.
So, here's my question. Since we had to go to public hearing with the first version?
Yes.
What does extending it do?
I believe that's, I would leave that to the applicant to better explain the circumstances around her clients. Is that fair?
Sure. So, I think what we'd like to have happen is that you continue the hearing till June 5th, and then at June 5th, we would come back to you, and hopefully the judge has ruled, and I'll go into that in just a little more detail, but then we, once that public hearing closes, we can then submit to you the signed revised conditions, which is the case that the CAC voted on and the Planning Commission voted on, and then, so you'll be considering the case that has been approved by these various other community groups.
But I thought it was too late to submit?
We can submit revised conditions after we close the public hearing. So that's our goal, is to get back to that point.
That's right.
Okay.
So that smaller, the later requests, the later petitions are more restrictive than what was initially submitted, and so it would be fine once the hearing is closed for Ms. Maddox to submit that with full signatures for your consideration. Okay.
I will also tell you, Douglas Norine is here, who represents one of the three property owners. We've been in contact today, and I think he is acquiesced that if we can continue the public hearing, he will, he is concurs with that.
With June 5th?
Cut off this.
Yeah, so if we moved it to July 2nd?
Oh, you cut June 5th out?
No, we have so, we have the budget, we have multiple big public hearings that night. We added another zoning case, and we said earlier today, no more. I don't know, we were like. We do it the 19th?
19th?
The 19th.
June 19th, that would be okay.
June 19th?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it then.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so we'll continue the hearing. Did I reopen it? Hearing's open. We just started talking. Okay, we'll open the hearing and continue it till June 19th.
Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. And we're fine waiting to see the presentation?
Since you did advertise, we were obligated to advertise, I don't know if there are people here who may want to speak.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this?
Z-35.
Z-3517 on Rock Quarry Road. Okay, thank you, find them, reminding me. So next we have Z-3617 Corporate Center Drive.
So this is a request to rezone six acres from commercial mixed-use three stories with a parkway frontage to commercial mixed-use five stories with a green frontage and conditions. Your Planning Commission votes in favor. You have an unofficial, because it was unadvertised, West CAC vote, but the West CAC leadership has communicated to staff that they have no intention of revisiting the matter. They feel satisfied this was discussed on more than one occasion. So, you're zoning here, again CX 3 with your parkway frontage at the corner of Corporate Center and Chapel Hill Road. There's a little bit of commercial mixed-use seven-story parkway north of here, some Office Park, four-story on the west side of Corporate Center, some more Office Park north of here, a little bit of R-4 up here on Lincolnville Road, and then a little bit of CX south of Chapel Hill and otherwise industrial mixed-use here. So, looking on the ground, what does, what does Office Park four stories look like? You can see that here on the west side of Corporate Center, you can see the site is mostly wooded, part of it has been cleared, and you can just see generally a lot of development in this area, kind of a mixed bag in terms of what's on the ground here, and then I-40 and the interchange at Chapel Hill Road approximate here. So, looking west on, west on Chapel Hill Road towards the interstate, looking east on Chapel Hill Road back towards town, looking southbound on Corporate Center, down towards Chapel Hill Road, you can see the site there. There's some conditions here, so we have some prohibition of uses. Standalone retail is limited to 120,000 square feet, and then there's an additional provision that the combined, combination of office and retail cannot be more than 202,000 square feet, 200,000 square feet, and specifies kind of the mix there. You have specifications about your building facade materials that are pretty extensive, and then also, not just the types of materials, but the percentage there, and then a provision about how surface parking would relate to Chapel Hill Road, establishing a minimum setback of 100 feet from the right-of-way when there's no building between the parking and the street. And remember, you also have your green frontage here, which requires at least a 20-foot setback, a 20 to 50-foot setback. Your change here, you have a significant increase in your residential entitlement. Your, again, your setback on your front line decreases potentially a little bit, down to as little as 20 feet, but your side and your rear setbacks are not changing, your side street setback actually is increasing with your green frontage. And then your retail and office intensity are not changing too terribly much, really your big gain is in your residential units, because remember that limit of the 200 and 200,000 square feet was put in place on your standalone retail and your mix of retail and office. So your future land use map here, community mixed-use, you're consistent with that. This is in our current adopted urban form map, this is in the transit stop buffer and at the corner of two urban thoroughfares, also in the growth center overall, consistent with your 2030 comprehensive plan, consistent with your future land use map. Feel like with your green frontage, you're now consistent with your urban form map, that's a late-breaking change to the case, since it's been at the table in front of you, so overall, consistent. And then again, recommendations for approval from your Planning Commission and your West CAC. What kind of questions can I answer for you?
So, and you may have already mentioned this, if you have, I apologize, access to the property?
Access to the property, so this is a corner, it's a lot.
So would it be right-in, right-out on 54 and then Corporate Center Drive?
I'm going to defer to my Transportation colleagues on that one.
Apologize, there it is. I believe that both, I'm sorry, still down in Southeast Raleigh. Chapel Hill Road is an NCDOT facility, so they would need to get that driveway, and they may ask for a full movement, and they may in fact be able to get that. And they do have, kind of in this area of Corporate Center, enough room past the median to make that full movement.
Yeah, because I believe 54 in that area is divided with a median?
It is. At least part of it.
Part of it is.
Yes, it's, yes, yeah, so that would definitely be a right-in, right-out. I missed that, since it's a little narrow one in the area.
Thank you. Okay. Open the hearing, well, open the hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? Well, I said first. Okay. So we can. She's coming in.
Yeah, I'm coming in.
Are you going to close the hearing?
Well.
Okay. Sure, we'll close the hearing.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated May 1, 2018, contained in the agenda material, and to approve the zoning amendment.
I have one question.
Sure.
Does it have a rooftop amenity?
Oh, hush.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are out. All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.